Yeah, this is. Gives us up to date. So what's between him and Steve? On top of it.
I need one of those clocks in my office.
That one right there?
Yeah, because my days seem to fly by and I don't get anything done. Huh?
All right, we're gonna call to order the town council regular meeting Tuesday, December 17th, 2024. Our invocation will be delivered by Pastor Tim Cook of the Wasumisaw Baptist Church.
Pray together. Father Monk's Corner is a town. But for many of us, this is the place that we call home. Of all the places on planet Earth that you could have placed us, we're right here. We are intricately connected to this place and to these people. We are sharing our lives with one another. We are growing together in life. We thank you for these councilmen and our mayor, that you have called them to serve this people here. I thank you for their sacrifices and I pray that as they make decisions, they'll always keep in mind the things that they do affect and impact all of our families and shape the place that we call home. May they make decisions and lead us and serve us in such a way that in those later years of life, we look back with great fondness and count it a privilege to have Monk's Corner as home. We thank you for each of our law enforcement personnel, our firefighters, our EMT workers, for all of our first responders. They make many sacrifices each and every day on our behalf to provide for us, to serve us, to protect us, to care for us when we're hurting. May you give them the strength and the wisdom they need to handle their responsibilities well. Look around and see so many students here tonight. I thank you for the schools in our home. I thank you for the teachers, the administrative staff. I thank you for these students. I thank you for their spirit. They're at such a special time in life. My prayer is through all that is done here in this room, it will help lay a strong foundation upon which they will build their lives and their futures, and may their lives honor you. So we thank you. We look to you for guidance and help. As we pray in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Councilman Swetman will lead us into Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight, we have a special presentation for St. John's Christian Academy Cheer Team State Championship recognition. Proclamation, whereas the Town of Monk's Corner Town Council is proud to recognize the historical achievements of the 2024 St. John's Christian Academy Varsity Competition Cheer Team. And whereas the 2024 St. John's Christian Academy Varsity Competition Cheer Team proudly won the SKEZA Class AA/AAA Game Day Experience Cheer State Championship by a margin of 11 points, defeating the reigning state champs in all SKEZA Class AA/AAA schools. And whereas the 2024 St. John's Christian Academy Varsity Competition Cheer Team, under the outstanding leadership of head coach Hannah Hanks, were led by an outstanding group of athletes, namely Ashi Patel, Addison Law, Ally Sharrell, Ally McCoy, Bailey Bostick, Carly Hoffman, Chandler Cumby, Emily Kason, Emma Blackburn, Carter Schindeldecker, Kaylee Kaiser, Kylie Finley, Mackenzie Schweitzer, Maddie Taylin, Mackinley Lawrence, Olivia Kunkel, Presley Lael, Reagan Ashby, and Rebecca Gathers. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Thomas J. Hamilton Jr., and the Town Council members of the Town of Monk's Corner do hereby proclaim December 17th, 2024, as St. John's Academy Varsity Competition Cheer Team Day. And Monk's Corner, South Carolina hereby acknowledge and applaud their historical achievements on this day, 17th December, 2024. We're gonna have the team come up with the coaches and of course Becky. Real quick, St. John's is my neighbor and they're such a great school. One of my favorite things to do in the morning when they're at chapel is to sit on my porch with a cup of coffee and to listen to the singing. It's such a wonderful environment over there. Councilman Law, will you please come up with me and stand by your daughter?
In the middle here, so the middle has to hold. And then let me get in behind you. No, you're good.
I understand.
One, two, three.
You got one more. You got yours? All right. Emma, you can get one of Hannah.
Yep.
Say it from work.
Oh. Okay. Um, I wasn't quite prepared for this, but um, I just wanna say that I'm very proud of all of y'all and all your hard work. Also, we had Zab, who, his name wasn't in there, but he was our mascot. So I wanna give him some recognition as too. Zab was a football player who approached me earlier on in the season and was like, "How can I contribute?" And I was like, "Well, when football's over, I'll find something for you, dude." So he was our mascot and he played a big part in our championship as well. These girls put in a lot of work, a lot of time, a lot of effort. Everyone here cheered on JV or varsity. And a lot of them also played volleyball, so they were practicing multiple times a day, multiple hours a day, multiple practices a day. And again, traveling to far Friday night football games and then getting up on Saturdays and going to competitions again. So they definitely deserve it. They worked hard and I'm just so very proud of everyone.
We'll give you a couple of minutes if you want to leave. You're more than welcome to stay and watch us. I know. All right, approval of minutes, regular meeting minutes from November 19th, 2024. Do I have a motion? Second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Mayor's report. All right, another active month out and about. November 20th, had Thanksgiving lunch with our public service team. Also, on the 20th, I got to sit in with the fire department with their fire officer leadership training. Really cool to sit down with them and see the direction that our fire department's going. It was awesome. November 20th was a busy day for me. I also went to the police officers Thanksgiving dinner. Councilman Law was also in attendance. The 21st, I went to Bonner Elementary to judge their holiday baking contest. The 22nd, went to Berkeley Elementary to participate in the pizza party with the Monk's Corner Police Department to celebrate the graduation of the fifth grade lead class. This class was taught by Lieutenant Antoine Richardson. The program focuses on teaching children to be a strong learner, make healthy choices, and be more resistant to peer pressure. So thank you Monk's Corner Police Department. On the 22nd, I went to Berkeley Seniors for the Day of Caring, spent the morning with them playing games and getting them ready for lunch. Great group of people there. The 27th, went to the ribbon cutting for Stirred by God. These are some amazing women who owns this small business. Councilman Dennis was in attendance. December 6th, participated in our downtown Christmas festival. We combined our shopping on Main and the Christmas tree lighting into one event. We had an amazing crowd and some really talented performers. Hats off to Susan, you know, our master of ceremony, Liba, public service, police, fire. I mean, this is an all-hands event. And that's kind of the same thing with our parade, you know? It's a massive undertaking to put these events on, but it's something that the town council, myself and staff really enjoy being a part of for our community. December 7th was the nighttime Christmas parade. You know, many floats, beautiful night for it. You know, once again, one thing that we do is the day after, the first day back after these events, we're having meetings. We're talking about what we liked, what we'd like to improve. We scope out other towns' Christmas parades to try to get ideals. So we're always working on the next one. So thank you to everyone that's involved with that. On the 9th, I presented the awards for best decorated business here at Town Hall. To see the spirit that these businesses have, you know, that's what makes these parades is the participants. South Carolina State Band was amazing as always. But to see all the decorated lights and cars and floats, it just makes a nighttime parade that much special. On December 10th, I spoke at Point North Church during the 35th Annual Candlelight Memorial Service to honor loved ones affected by drunk or drug driving. Captain Mixon also spoke at this event. Lieutenant Richardson also attended. You know, I wanna thank the Kennedy Center and Coroner Darnell Hartwell for putting this event on. As we're in the holiday season, there's so many options where you do not have to get behind the wheel of a car drunk. So please don't do that. December 11th, ribbon cutting for Vogue Nail Salon at Fox Bank. Councilwoman Lloyd was in attendance. That is a beautiful shop and thank them for coming into the Town of Monk's Corner. On the 11th, I went to the Fire Department's Christmas dinner at the Barony House Restaurant, had amazing food and fellowship. You know, these guys live with each other for days at a time. And to just sit back and see them outside of a firehouse, the way they get along is really something special. December 13th, I was invited to participate in the coat and food giveaway at the Farmer's Market Pavilion. Our Monk's Corner Fire Department was representing along with our Monk's Corner Police Department and our mental health advocate and our victims advocate. That was a very successful event. We gave out a lot of good coats and food. The 14th, I assisted with Habitat for Humanity House on Hutchison Lane with the Monk's Corner Police Department. And then that afternoon, I had my youngest son's wedding. So it was a very busy weekend for myself. Today, we had our Toys for Tots Pie in the Face recognition. The amount of toys that we've collected this year, I mean, it's amazing. Not only what Chief Gas, Chief Young, the men and women of the Fire Department, Police Department, but our community partners. You know, the winners are the kids. You know, Chief Gas got the pie this year again. I love that he's such a great sport about it. So y'all watch Facebook. There'll be some postings coming out on the Monk's Corner Police Department Facebook page. So future, we have on December 19th, the town will present Christmas music on Main at 7:00 PM at Unity Park. Christina Ren is a local and she's gonna be participating. And we're gonna have some musicians from Nashville that come. So to wrap it up, this is our last council meeting of the year. To all our citizens of Monk's Corner, from Town Council, myself, the staff and employees of the Town of Monk's Corner, we wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. That is my report.
I have a few items to update you on, some projects we've got going on. The bridge replacements at Jolly and Whitesville are ongoing. Jolly Road is currently closed because they've pulled it out to be able to put a new corridor in. The hope is, the plan is, is to finish that this week and then next week move on and do the same for Whitesville. All the detours are in place. We had a little bit of an issue with people not understanding the detours and hopefully that was addressed today. But those two bridge replacements are ongoing. The playground is moving full speed ahead. If you have a chance to go by there, there's really been, I won't jinx this. We have not had any trouble with moving forward. But we do have one change order that I wanna tell you about that we added some shade. We looked at it and determined that it would do for some more shade structures. And so four new umbrellas are gonna go over the playground. And one, and another one was upsized. So hopefully that will help a lot as well. The Fox Bank Mast arms intersection project is also ongoing. They closed the outgoing and incoming lanes alternately last week, week before, to be able to remove those islands. So then when they go and do what they're gonna do in January, which is put piping underneath there, they can redirect traffic around it. So that went well. All those are being done at night. And so we expect in the first or second week of January for that to continue and have more work at night. And we've been posting all that on Facebook. And then Chief Gas has one introduction for you.
That's us.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, Council, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce Ethan LaBelle. He is the newest addition to the Fire Department's administrative staff. He is the new captain of Community Risk Reduction. He'll be doing public education, helping us with smoke alarm installations, tracking all the information for that. We stole him away from Central Berkeley Fire and EMS, so there's a plus. Hopefully Tim won't be too mad at me for getting rid of one of his guys. But he's got 16 years' experience, married, father of four. Should fit in. He's a hunter, fisherman, so ought to fit right in around here.
Welcome.
And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
All right, new business consideration, safety wellness incentive program. We're gonna have Battalion Chief Denny provide our information on that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, Council. My name is Battalion Chief Corey Denny, if you don't know who I am. I've been with the town 20 years currently, serving the community of Monk's Corner. Love it, enjoy it every day. And also, I reside on the Safety Committee as the chairperson for the Town of Monk's Corner. What was presented to us by the town and the administration was to come up with something that we could reward our employees to be a healthier, live healthier lifestyle. You know, just be healthier in general, mental health, physical health, stuff like that. So what we present to you today in your council packets is a program that's gonna reward our employees for just doing things that typically everybody does on their own. They go get vaccinations, they go get physicals. You'll get points for participating in run-walks, town activities, being CPR certified. There's a whole list of stuff that you can see in your packets that's included. So what happens is you do one of these things, you look at the point value, and you send that in to the HR staff. It can be submitted through ADP, our new payroll software. You can submit that documentation and you'll get points. Once you achieve 12 points, then you'll be issued a gift card. We're gonna give gift cards in the amount of $50 to start. And with that $50 qualifies you for the end of the year prize, which is six $500 gift cards. So we're kind of sweetening the pot. If this is stuff you do already, you know, getting an eye exam, physicals, everything you see there, then it kind of sweetens the pot at the end. So it is an unbudgeted item that we're requesting $10,000 for annually. So you know, with that presented to you guys, that can increase, that could decrease based on participation. There is a breakdown. I can explain if y'all have any questions about that.
Go ahead.
I would just like to say thank you to Chief Denny and all of the Safety Wellness Committee members for doing the work. This is something they've been working on for a while, gathering information and seeing how other people, other towns have done it. One thing that I did wanna point out is there's also an incentive here for identifying safety issues with solutions. And I think that was a really important thing that they included. This isn't just about personal safety and wellness. This is about how we as a town can be better, so good job for them.
Yes, thank you very much.
Would this program help with the insurance?
Yeah, theoretically, just doing this program itself doesn't affect our rates. But the theory being is if we can be successful in this and people are healthier, we are creating less accidents, then that will have that positive impact. Anything else?
How did this tie in at all with the reduction that we had with, I think, the 60,000?
So with that, the lady that does that from the state, she advised us that, you know, if there was more stuff in place, if she's seen improvement from the town in trying to reduce the liability, which this was then one of the things that we looked at and said, will this be a consideration? And you know, she came to our meetings and, you know, luckily enough, I think it was presented last council meeting, you know, she chose us to have a reduction in our insurance, which came out to about a $60,000 reduction in our liability insurance for the upcoming year. So yes, you know, it references to it specifically, it's not gonna reduce it, but the other stuff that we do and the things that branch off of it will definitely reduce our insurance in the future.
Thank you. Do I have a motion? Second, all in favor? Aye, all opposed? Thank you. Old business, there's no old business to be brought before council. Public input, we have one person, Jody Nyers. Please step up and give us your name and address. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Jody Nyers at 112 Mulberry Crossing Lane. Last month, I stood before you inquiring about the new townhome development at the corner of Main Street Extension and RC Dennis Boulevard with concerns about the potential entrance exit to be located at RC Dennis Boulevard directly across from Edward Drive. Since that meeting, a petition has been started with signatures of over half of the residents of Fairlon, Barony, and Cedar Island. And while we know the majority of the neighborhood is not within the town limits, there's been much discussion within the neighborhood and even a story online, Five News, about the potential for large traffic issues, fender benders, pedestrians crossing the street, major motor vehicle accidents, as the proposal will create an intersection where one does not exist now. While we know there were meetings where neighbors spoke up against this new intersection again due to public safety concerns, those voices may have fallen on deaf ears as the proposal seems to be moving forward. But the road has not been open yet, or I should say the area there. I spoke to the SDOT traffic engineer who stated in situations such as this, there are usually three parties involved, the developer, the town or the county, and the state. He indicated they were tasked to perform a traffic study, which they did. However, it sadly does not warrant a traffic signal light. I even inquired about creating a roundabout at RC Dennis and Edward Drive. He said that takes another study and would delay the project. So I don't see that happening. However, it would be nice to know that the town would look into it. If on the other hand, this project is in the final stages and the entrance exit is going to be done, regardless of how the neighbors feel, we would like for the town to consider moving it a little bit further away from Edward Drive, heading south towards the shopping center to avoid this intersection public safety situation I have repeatedly stated. Not even sure if that's a possibility, but since it has not yet been opened, it would be nice if we could just have somebody take a look at it. We really appreciate your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you. And please feel free to reach out to Justin if you have any more questions, concerns. We understand, just like Moss Grove and other areas, that this is scary for the residents. So we're listening. All right, executive session, I need a motion to go into executive to discuss planning commission appointments, proposed contractual agreements related to the downtown redevelopment project, contractual matters related to the renovation and upgrade of Dr. William H. Lacy Memorial Park. Do I have a motion? Second? All in favor? All opposed? We are now in executive sessions.
All right, is there a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second? All in favor? All opposed? We're out of executive session. All right, is there any other matters to come before council?
I move that we appoint Patrice Campbell to serve on the planning commission.
Do I have a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose?
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to make a motion that we authorize Jeff to execute the MOU with CK Development Group.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All oppose? That passes. Is there a motion to adjourn?